To be affixed this fifth day of February 2018, and it is signed by Mayor Dennis Law.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the proclamation to be adopted as read.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Person, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And here this evening is Wendy Dorr to receive this proclamation.
Thank you. I'd say a couple things. Mayor Law and council members, thank you again. I know you did this last year, and this year you're joining not only the city, but the state of Washington, King, Pierce, and Snohomish Counties this year, and 20 other cities who are recognizing the importance of oral health for their children. So we're just thrilled to have you continuing to support the kids and families. The University of Washington does see a lot of children from Renton, especially those with special needs, because it is a little bit of a drive. But we have one of the only special needs clinics that can serve children with autism, Down Syndrome, and other special needs right in the clinic. So we are thrilled to have you joining us and really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here this evening. Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a couple of things before, just let Clay know, we do have sound now, Clay, thanks. As the council knows, the state legislature did pass a capital budget, and you all know that one of the things that we really celebrated was that allowed them to approve $3.05 million for funding for Sunset Park, which is, you heard in your committee, the whole meeting will allow us to complete that project. In addition to that project, however, there was a one and a half, just a little over one and a half million dollar grant for, from the Department of Ecology that we submitted that will allow us to complete some Stormwater Green Connections project in the Sunset area community as well. This is very similar to one that we completed a few years ago. So it's a further effort on our part to improve that neighborhood and hopefully continue to stimulate private investment to go along with the public investment and really change the character and livability of that neighborhood, so we're proud of that. In addition to that, Mr. Mayor, we obviously have a number of other traffic improvement efforts going on throughout the city. We just encourage our folks to be careful and cautious as they drive and be aware that there are construction workers sometimes very close to, if not in the right of way. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Covington. Next is audience comments. We have two people signed up to address the council, and I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record. And you have five minutes, we have a timer with the city clerk there. First is Kelly Balcom Bartok. We know he's a Renton resident.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I appreciate the time tonight to address you. And following in the theme of health that I've seen with the proclamations, on behalf of Valley Medical Center and our CEO Rich Rudman, I'd like to thank Mayor Law for participating in our groundbreaking last, almost now, two weeks ago for our new cancer center here in Renton. As many of you may know, cancer is the number one leading cause of death in our community. Most of us here have been touched by some form of cancer. Death in our, sorry, and the big C-word is life-changing. My father, in fact, prostate cancer, to give an example. We at Valley feel very passionately about this and partnering with patients to help develop a plan of care tailored to their individual situations and needs. This helps them determine their next steps, something we're told is comforting and gives patients and families great peace of mind. Our cancer team encourages shared decision-making, providing an exceptionally diverse team of specialists, cutting-edge technology, and clinical trials. What that really means is that a patient can meet with all of his or her caregivers, one place, one time, and learn together collectively what they need to do. This new cancer building will provide a sanctuary of hope, help, and healing right here in our community, saving those from traveling from Seattle or having to travel to Seattle. If anyone in our community wishes to provide support for the new cancer center, sorry, donations are welcome at our website, valleymed.org/donate. But I do again want to thank the mayor for participating in the groundbreaking, and we apologize for some of the traffic inconveniences, probably for the next 18. I'm off script now, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly. Next is Milt Reimers.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Milt Reimers, live at 2907 Mountain View Avenue North, Renton. I'm here to talk about the East Side Rail Corridor. Mountain View Avenue North, the community is a very tight-knit community. We live just off Lake Washington Boulevard, north of the entrance, the north entrance to Kulan Park. We're very, very excited about the new trail that is being finished. We think. And I say we think because although it's a great asset to not only the neighborhood, but the entire east side, from Renton all the way to Woodenville, we do have some concerns. And those concerns are in the areas of traffic, parking, vandalism, trash, potential accidents. And these are things that we see every day, we've seen for months and years as far as our neighborhood. And as I say, we're excited about the trail, and what we're trying to do, and the reason I'm here tonight, is I have a white letter to give to all of you that addresses these concerns, they're signed by Mountain View residents. We would like to somehow or another have a voice in some of these decisions. We know that King County is actually leading the charge with the rail corridor. But, for example, access to the park from Mountain View, although I do understand that there may be a new access point off of the trail further south in maybe four years, it'll be connecting with the upper loop that is part of the trail in Kulan. And we have to work through Burlington Northern, which takes a little time, and then also Shoreline Management. So that's one where obviously the city is involved. Others, as you may or may not know, our street is not built to code exactly, so the parking is a challenge. Turnaround for trucks, whether it be garbage trucks, FedEx, UPS, or even contractors, is somewhat challenging. So we are excited about the trail, but we want to try and maintain our community as best we can. And so that is what I would request or ask is how we as a community, we have, how we could be involved, more involved going forward. We've attended in very large mass to all of the presentations and community meetings that Erica Jacobs at King County has conducted. I personally met with her at their offices, along with another member of our community. And I realize that she's got a pretty big task on her plate, that's to manage all the way from Renton up to Woodenville. But each, each community wants their concerns heard. And so not only do I have the white paper for you all tonight, but also we're going to King County to try and get better interaction with them. So I not only want to present this to you, but I also ask for your assistance, and if someone could reach out to me, I would be very excited to participate and do what we can to make the trail not only a great asset, but also keep our community as a nice community that we have.
Great, well, thank you for being here tonight. Let me say just a couple of things. One, we are working very close with King County to get the entrance off of Mountain View to the park. And I think that's going to be a lot sooner than you think, but I don't, I don't want to be quoted until we have a specific date. The other thing is, when it comes to anything that's on the trail or the parking area along Mountain View, which is all county-owned, any specific issues that you have, you, you really do need to make sure you're communicating with the county, because they do control it. And Reagan Dunn is your King County council member representing that area, so I'd make sure to keep him in the loop on any of your concerns. And meanwhile, our community services administrator is sitting back here, Kelly Beamer. If you could give her your contact information, she'll be a great direct link to you on what we know and what we're doing.
Fantastic.
And also you can call us anytime when there are specific issues that you, you know, want some attention paid to. Okay, and you can give those, you can give the paperwork to the city clerk.
And I do have one for each and every one of you, so you can take it home tonight and read it.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, we have eight items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move we, oh, do you have?
I'd like to pull the ORCA pass.
Second. I guess we don't have to second that.
No, we don't, I just need to figure out which number that was.
I'll figure it out here.
It's F, okay.
And thank you, Don, for doing that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I'd like to approve the consent agenda minus item F.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Carmen, that the, approve the consent agenda minus item F. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Mr. Person, item F.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the ORCA pass for the city's trip reduction program. And it's actually a contractual agreement we have with our city union. And staff asked, because they need to get it in the process, that the council concur in it tonight. And with that, I've moved the council concur in the recommendation of the Transportation System Division to sign the ORCA pass contract.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Carmen, that item F of the consent agenda be council concur. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Carmen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we actually have three transportation committee reports.
Okay, the first committee report is regarding the Airport Advisory Committee appointment. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve Mayor Law's appointment of Jeannie Mund to the Renton Airport Advisory Committee, Kenyatta Neighborhood Alternate, term to expire on May 7, 2020. And this is signed by the committee chair and members.
I move the council concur in the committee report. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Carmen, second by Mr., was it you, Mr. Pavoni? The council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The next committee report is regarding an amendment to the Airport Advisory Committee. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the amendment to Resolution Number 3495 and approve the addition of one voting member to the Airport Advisory Committee to represent the Benson Hill neighborhood. The committee further recommends the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading, and this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council concur in the committee report. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Carmen, second by Mr. Person, and the council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, the final committee report is regarding the update to airport rules and regulations and minimum standards. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to refer the airport rules and regulations and minimum standards documents to the Renton Airport Advisory Committee, R-A-A-C, for review and to make recommendations on updates to the documents. Upon completion by the R-A-A-C, staff will bring back to council via separate legislation the proposed update recommendations to the documents for council review and adoption, and this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move the council concur in the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Carmen, second by Mr. Person, and that council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
And that's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pavoni.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Perez.
The committee, the Community Service Committee has one committee report to present.
This committee report is regarding the Community Center exercise equipment condition. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve a carry-forward balance of $14,295.95 in the 2017 citywide exercise equipment replacement account, towards the 2018 budget amount of $15,785.50 for a total of $30,081.45 in the same amount, account. And authorize the purchase of four new replacement treadmills at the Renton Community Center. The cost totals $22,275, leaving a balance of $7,806.45 for repair and maintenance of citywide exercise equipment. And this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommend action of the Community Service Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Perez, second by Ms. Witche, the council concur with the Community Services Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Mr. McIrvin.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Witche.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee has a one committee report.
This committee report is regarding an agreement with RH2 Engineering. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement with RH2 Engineering Incorporated for the pressure-reducing valve station rehabilitation and replacement study in the amount of $195,190 to conduct the pre-designed study to evaluate the conditions of the existing 48 pressure-reducing valve stations. And this is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Witche.
I move that the council concur with the findings of the Utilities Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Witche, second by Mr. McIrvin, the council concur with the Utilities Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Mr. Person.
No, old business.
Okay, moving on to legislation. One ordinance for first reading.
Yep, and this ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 217-2 of the Renton Municipal Code, adding one voting member from the Benson Hill neighborhood to the Airport Advisory Committee and providing for separability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Carmen.
I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Carmen, second by Mr. Person, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, moving on to new business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of items to report. First, on Wednesday, February 7, 2018, four council members will be participating in the Public Works Department Chili Cook-Off at the Shops. Eat some of the finest chili in all of the land. And also on Monday, or yeah, Monday, February 12, 5:30 PM, Committee of the Whole will meet. We have two items on the agenda, 200 meal proposals and facility condition assessment, and that will be happening in council chambers. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carmen.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on February 12, Monday at 5 o'clock, Public Safety Committee will meet in the council conference room. We have one item on the agenda, it'll be emerging issues. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Perez.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. McIrvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, one committee to announce. The Planning and Development Committee will be meeting on Thursday, February 8, at 4 PM in the council conference room. There are two items on the agenda, one, long-range planning docket slash work program, and two, emerging issues in CED. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Witche.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Thursday, February 8, at 3:30 PM, the Utilities Committee will be meeting in the council conference room. We have two items on the agenda, the first is Cedar Grove composting orders, and the second is the Taska Street vacation request. And I also wanted to point out that the chili cook-off time change, I don't know if you've said 11?
No, it's, I said 10:30.
Okay, yes, it's at 10:30, I just want to make sure you had the time change, okay. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, next Monday, February 12, at 4 PM, the Finance Committee will meet in the council conference room. We have five topics, Aurora's Carport Fee Waivers, and I slaughtered that name, I apologize, I had to time. Secondly, structural and non-structural plan review contract with Reed Middleton, capital project coordinator position conversion, vouchers, and emerging issues in revenue streams. And, Mr. Mayor, as, as the council knows, I am a member of the state's forensic investigation council, which is a real fancy name for being an advisory board to the state crime lab. And there, there's issues coming up there that I think have significant impact on our city and on our state. And I would like to take about two minutes, explain it, because it's way too big, and see if the council be interested in making it part of our legislative agenda. And ask Mr. Prince if maybe the South Sound Cities.
Sound Cities.
Cities, Sound Cities Association, I want, I like to put the south in there all the time. Would be interested in having a report on this and get the crime lab to report. But it has to do with the toxicology lab and the DNA lab. In 2012, they had 11,000 submissions for blood samples at the lab. In 2017, it went up to 16,000. And the wait time went to 30 days to get the results, to where it is now going to be 70 to 90 days for results. And this is driven by the marijuana, basically by the new marijuana law. Because more agents, police agencies are asking for blood tests because of the marijuana. And so they can't charge, the police can't charge a case on that until they get the results back from the, the lab. They anticipate that without additional funding, it could go up to 120 days. And on top of that, and this is, the toxicology lab gets the blood samples from the coroners around the state, and they help determine the cause of death. Well, a lot of people and a couple coroners were, they're explaining that it used to be 30 days that they could get the results and report back to the family. And in some cases, now it's up to 90 to 120 days because of the priority. And it really affects families, A, they don't know the exact cause of death, but even further than that, if they have life insurance or retirements and stuff, until the cause of death comes along, that funding is cut off, so it has become kind of an issue. And then after the first of the year, the new DNA law will require that all rape kits that are still sitting in police locker rooms around the state of Washington, which is estimated to be 10,000 cases, have to be tested, have to be turned in and tested. And they don't have the, the people or the money to do the testing on that. So I would like to see that, I would move that that becomes one of the city's legislative priorities. And I would encourage Sound Cities Association to get, we can set up a
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
demonstration from them. It is really important, and they, to be honest with you, the, our committee is a political, basically, for these. But it's sitting in it, it's very technical. But man, the stuff that they, they manage to do is just awesome, and it just really serves the public. So I'm, that's it.
So, did you want a briefing before you tried to add it to the legislative?
I could ask, we could ask for a briefing, maybe.
Before you add it to the legislative agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I mean, one of my thoughts, and I thank Mr. Person for the information, would be that the recreational marijuana legislation generated a lot of money for the state. And I know that a lot of it's been needed for education and other things, but it does seem like it would be appropriate to use some of the money to be able to keep up with the crime lab. It'd probably be just a drop in the bucket compared to how much we bring in.
Well, it makes a lot of sense, Mr. Person's recommendation that Sound Cities Association take a look at it, because to move anything in Olympia is going to take a big participation by all the cities. And would you, is your motion that we set a time for a briefing for the council, like Committee of the Whole, was that?
Yes.
Would that work? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, that we establish a briefing for Committee of the Whole. for committee of the whole on state crime lab needs and with possible movement by the city to add it to our legislative agenda. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, oh, I'm sorry.
Just a comment, we'll, we'll talk with our lobbyists as well, the, today, or tomorrow is the cutoff day for legislation with fiscal implications to move out of committee, so this will have to be amended on to some other things, so it'll, we'll be playing catch-up, but we'll do, we'll do whatever we can. We'll try to get, you know, our lobbyists to give us a good strategy, and we'll be back to the council with. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
There most likely isn't a quick fix for this year, but the legislature is getting ready to do the 2019, 2020 budget, and, and I'm pointing more, more towards that, because we understand, there, there will be a press release coming out from the committee here, hopefully in a, in a week or so, they're, they're drafting it now, and.
Well, that'll be, that'll be good to have them do a briefing and, you know, get, get some of the cities on board.
Good timing for the next cycle, I think.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I think I got everybody, what's the wish of the council?
Move we adjourn.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni, that we adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.